I'd like to call to order the December 4th, 2019 school committee meeting. Have we all please stand for the collective allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items in fact may be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. I would like to welcome Megan Willis as our student rep tonight. Megan? Can we get an approval of our meeting notes from November 4th?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have some recognitions tonight. Okay, Mr. McLaughlin.
So it is my pleasure to honor one of our sixth grade students, Ms. Kaylee Brawl, who was selected to be the Peace Prize poster, award winner. It's an annual competition within the sixth graders in our school. And we had about two dozen applicants, finalists, submissions, and Kaylee stood out head and shoulders. You know Kaylee is a wonderful academic student, a wonderful artist, and a top-notch student at our school, and it was an honor to be able to award this prize to her.
Do you want to just talk about what your slats were on or how you came up with it?
I honestly do not know. I just kind of winged it. I just have no possible idea.
Awesome.
I just have no possible idea.
Alright, well it obviously came out really well, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next we have up our Division 4 Eastern Mass, oh, Division, I'm sorry, Division 6 Eastern Mass Cross Country Champions. Mr. Salvane.
Good evening, everyone. On November 9th, the seven members of our girls varsity cross-country team raced in the Eastern Mass Championships over in the Rhythm Development Center. They raced against 30 other schools, from all the way from Georgetown and Ipswich in Cape Ann to schools from Cape Cod and even in Tuckett. And of the 30 schools, they came in first place overall, winning the MIA Division 6 title. I know that scoring in cross-country isn't quite as popular in knowledge as scoring in, say, football, but basically the idea is that you take all the teams and you add in the finishing places of their top five runners. And like golf, the low score wins. And not only that, but the sixth and seventh runners, while they don't count for your score, they can hurt the opponent's score. And so all seven girls did a wonderful job and we ended up winning by 15 points over our nearest competitor.
Wow.
So we called them up for recognition, starting with our youngest member from 7th grade Addison Hoagier. One of our senior captains Caitlin Caprellia. Another senior captain Joey Kennon. And junior Charlotte Zanaski.
Can I, you guys come with your coach and just, but it's easy to get a picture over here.
With the committee's permission, we have the captains just like to say a few quick words.
Sure.
Awesome.
So, good evening, Dr. Oakley and esteemed members of the school committee. Thank you for honoring our team tonight. Before we go, we'd actually like to honor someone as well. In her many years of service to the West Bridgewater community, Dr. Oakley has always been a strong supporter of the middle school.
Senior high school running sports.
She has attended many home cross-country races and outdoor track and field meets, both on the old-new track and the new-new track.
She led the school's implementation of its popular indoor track and field program a decade ago.
And we know she will never forget her memories from when she coached her Mayflower Champion Girls Outdoor Track and Field Teams back when she was a biology teacher at the middle senior high school.
So, Dr. Oakley, as you complete your tenure as superintendent of West Bridgewater Public Schools, we would like to retire this singlet in your honor as well and present it to you this evening.
Thank you. Thanks. Yeah, it was way back when. Thank you very much.
Yeah, could we get another picture with Mr. Coach Salvane and the cross-country girls?
Do I have to put the single on?
Yeah.
It's been washed. It's been washed. Thank you, girls.
Mr. Tom Devly. We know of the bus accident and how he responded and his, you know, great nature with the kids. The kids were, came first, so we just want to take a few minutes. Ms. Flay's got a few words to say.
So absolutely, everyone in West Bridgewater knows Mr. Tom. Mr. Tom and I have a running joke. I always give him a hard time about coming into Roselle driveway a little too fast, but after those heroic acts on that Friday afternoon.
Thank you for running.
And I do have to say, I rode the bus on Monday morning to make sure the kiddos were okay getting on the bus. And every single kiddo was relieved to see Mr. Tom and the appreciation from the parents was huge, so thank you. I was hoping I could get all the kiddos up here, bus six kiddos with a picture with Mr. Tom.
You're right in the middle. Come on, guys, squeeze in. Come on, let's get Mr. Tom.
Alright. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tom.
Oh, thank you.
My pleasure.
We appreciate it.
Alright, I think we'll take a short recess so we get everyone home to bed so we get up to school tomorrow morning.
Bus is coming.
Very long, yeah. Be nice to know that you're right in the middle of the terms.
Ready? And we're back. Superintendent's update.
We have two things to discuss tonight. One is the joint conference, which seems now like it was so long ago because it was right after, immediately after the last committee meeting. But Mrs. Hule, Mrs. Sullivan, and Mrs. Smith attended with me a couple of the workshops for a couple of the days, and then Mrs. Smith was our delegate for the resolutions, so if you don't mind just giving a brief update of how the votes went, because I know we had read them the month before, so.
Yeah, so, real quick, in summary, all the resolutions passed as they were presented in the end. There was some discussion, extensive discussion about a couple of them, in particular the polystyrene, which is just styrofoam. You better know to me a styrofoam. They kept using that other technical word and I would get confused. But one of the things I really wanted to, and that passed as presented, the other one was the teachers' requirement to take the test before, the required test in Massachusetts. That one also had a lot of discussion before it passed. But one thing, I attended the District 3 meeting prior to the vote, and I am so thankful for all of the support that you guys show in our district and that you were able to attend the District 3 meeting and all of the information that they shared at the conference, the MSAC, MASC, and also, you know, within our district that we had the opportunity to talk about it prior to going, because I felt very prepared for the meeting. And a lot of the discussion that we were having was people asking for clarification on what the resolutions were about, so I felt very confident about what was being presented, was well thought out and thorough. And some of the discussion was people wanting to break the resolutions apart, thinking they were two different things, and in the end, everyone realized you needed the second step for the first step to make sense. And so, that was, it was good though, but we have a great district and I think it shows they have a lot of great leadership. And some of the resolutions were brought up by our district and that was another reason why we probably were better educated in them than some, so.
Awesome.
I don't know, it was good.
Thank you. And the sessions we attended too, I thought, were very well run. We got a lot of information, the keynotes were good. Usually, they usually put together a good conference. Second is update on the football team. As you know, our football team made it to the Division 8 Super Bowl and they played Friday night. And although the outcome wasn't what we had hoped it would be, it was an unbelievable experience either way. And it's been a heck of a ride the whole season. To be undefeated going into the Super Bowl is unbelievable. It's the first time we've been able to be at Gillette Stadium with this new style playoff system that they have for football, which really makes it a state championship, because you actually just narrow it down to the eight divisions with the two teams in each division. So, the kids played their heart out all season. Just the experience of being there, just in the stands there and looking at everything and seeing the kids warm up for, you know, 45 minutes on Gillette Stadium, it was awesome. And I know a lot of, a lot of people went that are here this evening. Also, a lot of people in the community went. We had so many fans. We had three sections and it was packed. It was just awesome to see all the spirit. And I'm just so proud of the team and the coach. They've been through a lot. They had a completely new coaching staff and all the new plays and had to put their trust into someone that they really didn't know, but they really bonded together. The kids were just great this year. I mean, I can't say enough about it, it was a great season. And so, I'd like to actually invite them to the next meeting to congratulate them because they also are Eastern, you know, Mass champions because they won that North-South game. And they played some great, great teams, especially during the playoffs. So, it was, it was a great time. I know there were a number of us there and I can't say enough about it, it was great. So, very happy. It's something they'll remember for the rest of their life, so it's cool.
It really is. I had a chance to talk to Chief Flaherty and I wanted to thank Lieutenant Nixon, Detective Devly, Officer Vaxer, and Officer Pope for their own personal time here in doing the escort over to Gillette. I think that was pretty cool for the kids to, you know, have the police riding behind them and forward them. And also, Chief Flaherty wanted me to know any of our teams that compete in state championships, he's going to be right there with them as well, taking them to their games and everything. So, it was, like Dr. Oakley was saying, it was a great show of support from the whole community, not just the school department, so it was great to see. The football team really rallied the community together.
They did.
That was great to see. Now we're on to...
Student rep.
Student rep, Megan Willis is up.
So the middle senior high school is so proud of their girls' cross-country team for being the Eastern Massachusetts champions. We are so proud of our football team who played in the Super Bowl at Gillette. There's a huge turnout for the boys' fan section. Unfortunately, they lost, but they had a great season. The Drama Club did an amazing with MAD, the Music, Art, Dance, Drama Night. There were many great students and staff acts. Lots of fun was had by everyone. Another great WB Powderpuff event was held with the sophomores just barely beating the seniors. It came down to field goals to break the tie, but the kids did great raising money for the senior scholarship fund. Several groups went over to the West Bridgewater Council on Aging last month. They loved the interactions with the seniors and the highlight was the Veterans Day Lunch. The band did a great job performing at the Brockton Christmas Parade. The school raised a lot of money for November. We had a new volley, oh, dodgeball tournament this year. Timeless one. It was a great fundraiser. Congratulations to Coach Kogler for being named Patriots Coach of the Week and Pats. Great Andre Tippett visit with the players. They were so happy this term to have many guest speakers come into the parable, which I think is great to have, like, we had Brittany Stone come in, the nurses, I think that's great for the students to have. The Roselle, they've had a very busy month. The third graders traveled to the Howard School to attend their annual Veterans Day Assembly. The students enjoyed the ceremony and learning about the importance of service. Thank you to Lucini Bus Lines for donating their buses. Teachers were excited to share their student success during parent-teacher conferences last month. It was nice to see the parents tend. They organized a collection for the food pantry and they are collecting non-perishable items until Friday, December 13. Their student council is up and running. They collected 52 pounds of leftover Halloween candy to donate for treats to troops. They're also busy designing posters to display around the school in support of their pride program. The Howard School, the Howard School enjoyed a patriotic Veterans Day ceremony on November 8th where they welcomed special guest Lieutenant Keith Wilson from the Pentagon to speak to their students about how important service is. Parents and local community members who are veterans also attended. They had their first round of the GUB last week and have one semifinalist. These students will study and prepare for the finals, which will happen after the new year. The parent-teacher conferences went very well, there were only eight open conferences left in the entire school. The 6th grade raised the necessary amount of money for the nature's classroom in record time, raising over $5,000 selling Hilliards, chocolate, candy bars for buses, and trip scholarships. 6th grade is also getting ready to go to Gillette Stadium for a field trip next week. And the Spring Street, the pre-k had an incredible Thanksgiving feast for all of their sessions. The kindergarteners, students went over to the West Bridgewater Library to listen to a story with Ms. Nanette. They were also able to sign their library cards, select a book, and check out. Community field trips are a great experience for our students. Students and families had their first parent-teacher conferences at Spring Street and they went very well. The teachers are using a new data collection system called ESGI and it's really made a difference in the conversations teachers are having with parents that are looking forward to a very busy December.
Awesome.
Thank you, Meg.
Thanks so much.
Onto business, Inclusion Matters, Mrs. Smith.
So on November 16th, at Bridgewater State University, Inclusion Matters hosted its second annual Voice at the Table IEP Conference for parents and caregivers of students with disabilities, and over 80 parents participated in a day of special education training featuring speakers from Bridgewater State, Boston University, Pittsburgh State, the Federation for Children for Special Needs, and Massachusetts Advocates Standing Strong. In addition to organizing the event, Inclusion Matters sponsored $500 in scholarships to parents who wanted to attend that night. On November 20th, we hosted its annual crafting fundraiser at Hammer &amp; Stain in Easton and we raised over $350 to further our efforts to support families with special needs. We are planning its fall and spring workshops right now, and they're including a continuation of its inclusive yoga series for kids at the Brockton area arc, two workshops on transition planning, and a workshop on inclusive sports and recreational offerings. Our next workshop will be on Monday, January 13th at 7:00 PM at the Bridge Center in Bridgewater. Kathy Hickie of the Federation for Special Needs will present on successful transition planning for parents and guardians anticipating their child's life after high school. The Bridge Center also provides childcare for those who reserve it via the Bridge Center's events webpage prior to. To keep current with all Inclusion Matters events, you can follow us on Inclusion Matters on Facebook at WBSEPEC.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you.
Year-to-date expense report, Mrs. Grant.
I'd like to update you on the progress that we've made in the business office this fall. We closed out this fiscal year for 2019, and that was, that was a big deal. It was really a joint effort between the business office staff and the town accountant. Once that was finished, we were able to complete the end-of-the-year report. This is required by the State Department of Education, and it is an onerous report that has 112 pages of instructions alone. Lot of fun. It, it's really a compilation of all the school data, from financial data down to the number of students that we transport by grade to school, you know, and what mileage category they all fall into. When I started this position, I was like told this report is universally detested by business managers, and I can honestly say I understand why now. It was an educational process. So now we're beginning the fiscal year '21 budget process and the administrators are all involved in that. And obviously, we compile it and go through all the details of it, and you're going to be seeing drafts in February. And so right now, we recognize that our current budget is really tight. And so we're looking closely at all aspects of the budget that we can control right now. And so we've proactively instituted a soft freeze, and this means that all spending requests have to be approved by the superintendent. So, you can never, you know, cut your way to success, right? So we've also, in addition to controlling the expenses, looked for ways to raise additional revenue. And Debbie Yanis, our curriculum director, has, is aggressively pursuing both private corporate grants and funding, as well as competitive state grants to enhance the budget. And she's had a lot of success already this year. We were awarded by 3M $6,000 in classroom supplies. 3M also awarded us $3,600 of a Discovery Ed Digital Science Tech Program. We received $45,000 of ST Math Education software from the Mind Institute. PPG Corporation has provided grants of $20,000 to be used on STEM education. In addition, we've received materials that allow us to add some enrichment programs at both the Roselle and Howard schools, and these include programs called Lego League, as well as Girls Who Code. So, this really is just a quick overview to give you an idea that we are focusing on our expenses and really, you know, are conscious of the budget. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
School improvement plans, who shall be first?
Mr. Michael Aiden.
So this was an experience, I'll tell you that, as my first school improvement plan. And so, as a special head director, doing my own school improvement plan is unique to me, so principals with years of experience have been doing it, so just bear with me. So, overall, for the Spring Street School, we have four goals, okay? And they all align to pillars of success, our strategic planning, two of them around student support, wellness, and safety, and two of them around professional practice. And so I'm just going to summarize kind of the two student support, wellness, and safety goals, along with the professional practice goals. You will see some commonalities between myself, the Roselle, and the Howard, you know, because we had these conversations about, you know, we are three separate buildings, however, you know, between the three of us, we're pre-k to six. And so there should be some commonalities between what we're doing in our schools to best support our students. So first and foremost is the SEL goal around, as the SEL, which is enhancing and expanding specialized programs and services, such as wellness supports and a continuum of special education services. So what we did was, to summarize this, we kind of started off with an online survey to get feedback from staff, talking with students, talking with other administrators, and kind of where do we see our weaknesses, where do we see our strengths, and how do we grow from here? And so from there, we developed our own professional learning community, which will, with enrolling it, rolling it out in January with a consultant, with a clinical consultant from North River Collaborative, who'd be kind of running the process. And really what it is, is tying social-emotional learning into our Tier 1 and Tier 2 instruction, which is something that we've seen district-wide, especially at the elementary level. And to partner with that, we've been doing some learning walks with a clinical psychologist as well, another one from outside the district, Dr. Najah Riley, who has gone in our buildings, talking with our staff, observing our classrooms, to see where we need to grow. And that's really what is, a strength-based approach that best supports teachers and ultimately domino effect that best support our kids. And so, starting in January, we'll have a year-long professional development for our teachers. I'm not a big fan of a one-and-done professional development, it needs to be ongoing, needs to be checking in with teachers, more of a coaching, and so that's what we're going to be doing. So starting in January, all the way through May, they'll have some really specialized, really intensive professional development and training support. So that kind of really revolves around the first goal there. Goal number two is around professional practice. And this is really, the goal is evaluate, expand, and enhance assessment tools, practices, and strategies in order to utilize data to improve student learning. And so what we're doing at the Spring Street is being more collaborative with the Roselle and the Howard, us coming together more, sharing data, looking at data, utilizing our ST Math program, using iReady, and having these data meetings on an ongoing basis to see where our students are at, checking in with them. In addition to that, when students transition to a new building, that's where a lot of the collaboration comes in hand. And then with that, we've been writing along with Roselle and Howard, writing individual student action plans to best support the students, you know, sorry, achievement and improvement. If we go over to goal three, this is around the reformation or revitalization of our RTI process at the elementary level. So, we've really revamped everything when it comes to interventions and how we best support our kids in our classrooms. And so the goal for this is develop a consistent approach to embed social-emotional learning, expectations, and support into the general education curriculum that can be scaffolded for use pre-k to 12th. And what we've realized is that we had three different models of an RTI process, and we really, you know, through our student council, through meeting with the administrators, is something we need to align ourselves with, and that's now creating a essentially k to six win process, Wildcat intervention network. And so that's what this goal kind of revolves around, and how do we best support our teachers and engaging in this work. And for the fourth goal, last but not least, is at the kindergarten level, is very Spring Street specific here, is our teachers, really teacher-centered, really teacher-activated, where they wanted to go a little bit more in-depth with writing. And they felt that writing, especially now at the kindergarten level, although they're in kindergarten, standards and our new MCAS really speaks to where they should begin their writing process. writing process. And so that's where they're really starting at the elementary, well, more at the kindergarten level now than they have ever in the past, which is looking at our specialized reading and looking at workshop model of writing and how to incorporate that through, within the classroom. So we worked on it a little bit last year with some PD. This year, they're really diving in and spending the entire year on revamping the whole writing curriculum at the kindergarten level, and hopefully, we'll, you know, kind of roll over to the Roselle next year and then trickle up, wood into the Howard. So that's kind of where we stand on the four goals there. Again, all aligned to the pillars of success, two of them around student support, wellness, and safety, and two of them around professional practice. Any questions? No?
Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
So Mr. Mike Glazek did a great introduction. There's no way I can follow that. So I'm going to jump right into my goals. Goal number one is investigate various elementary ELA programs and implement updated curriculum K to five. To give you a little bit of background, the elementary-level K to five, excuse me, have been using the Pearson Reading Street 2008 version. It was purchased in 2008. We were able to sustain for a pretty long time. We had online components that we could access, even though we had the older version. Last school year, we lost access to the computer system, so we can't go on that platform anymore. And along with that, the consumables that we were able to purchase are becoming fewer and far between. So teachers are really having to do a lot of supplemental, and when you have teachers doing supplemental instruction individually, there's going to be gaps. So what we're looking at this year is to really start looking at what we're looking for for a reading program. Going out on the Department of Ed has a great program, you'll see, as one of the action steps, called a heat map, where you can reach out to other districts, high-performing districts, districts with the same, you know, demographics, and see what programs they're using, go and do some visits. So kind of get a list this year of what we'd like to use, pilot something next year. Goal number two is very similar to Mr. Mike Glazek's social-emotional, I'm sorry, the data accountability. Evaluate, expand, and enhance assessment tools, practices, and strategies in order to utilize data to improve student learning. So what are we here to do? We're here to teach our kids, and we use data to drive that instruction. It's really important that you use the data appropriately. I mean, it's very easy to give assessments, so let us sit on a shelf. What we're making sure is that we're meeting consistently throughout the school year with the teachers in our building, to look at the data and change our instructions so that we, you know, can guarantee student success, meeting with other building administrators and teachers there as well, to make sure the transitions are smooth between the different Along with that goal, I have also included some action steps with revising the report card. So you'll hear Mr. McLaughlin talk a little bit about his really looking at, really kind of revamping the whole report card at the Howard School. From before I've been here, so I've been here five years, we've had the same report card. It is standards-based, so we don't have a whole lot of work to do, but it is time to really look at what we're measuring and making sure what we're teaching is what we're reporting on the report card. So we'll be doing some revision and some revising this year. Goal number three is our social-emotional learning goal. Enhance and expand specialized programs and services such as wellness, support, and a continuum of special education services. As Mr. Mike Glazek said, this is a really crucial thing that we're dealing with right now in West Bridgewater and all across the country, is the social-emotional aspect of our students. We're working really closely to make sure that we're providing teachers the strategies to bring into the classroom so they can be the best support to their students. Goal number four is enhancing and expanding our differentiated instruction practices pre-K to twelve. When I started here five years ago, that was kind of my thing, differentiated instruction. Roselle was a place where teachers, you know, stood in the front of the room, and they taught everyone the exact same thing all day long, and that just isn't what I came from. So over the last five years, we've worked really hard in creating a differentiated instruction process and program in the school. And now it's time to really tweak and fine-tune what the teachers are doing. So it's not just good enough to be sitting in small groups during the school day, but what are we doing in those small groups? So that'll be our focus. A huge piece of that, and we saw a little bit of it last year, was giving teachers the opportunity to visit each other. We say to kids all the time, you learn best from your peers. Teachers learn the best from each other as well, so that is our four goals.
Thank you very much.
You've been here five years?
Yes.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Time flies.
Wait, did you say it's been longer or shorter?
No.
Shorter.
Thank you. In all seriousness.
Good evening. So I don't know, I'm supposed to follow either of these two fine people, but we will give it a shot. So you have before you four goals, and the first two actually have the same strategic initiative, and that was intentional. Goal number one, evaluate, expand, and enhance assessment tools, practices, and strategies in order to utilize data to improve student learning, specifically report cards. The Howard School, if you've had children who've come through the Howard in the last few years, you know that we have a strikingly different report card from the Roselle. It is not at all standards-based. It is an A-through-F report card that doesn't really tell a whole lot about where students are at. And I think our staff, you know, we have issues with, you know, especially in fourth and fifth grade, what that tells about how students are progressing. So we're going to be looking at a variety of different other districts in terms of their setup for standards-based report cards, and at least looking at fourth and fifth grade for the upcoming year to roll out a standards-based report card that focuses on standards, not just skill development. So we're hoping in the springtime, we'll have a rough draft of that, and I believe Mrs. Goulet and I will be coming to you at some point in the spring to look at a possible policy revision to move to trimesters as part of that process, to give teachers a more adequate time to assess kids where they are in the standards. So that process will move forward this year. Goal number two, similarly, it's the same strategic initiative, but it's more broadly based, data analysis, very similar to what Mrs. Goulet and Mr. Mike Glazek are doing. The Howard has undergone a model, a transformation in their model over the last several years, where we've gone from individual elementary teachers teaching all four subjects, to now we have two teacher teams in fourth and fifth grade that teach ELA and social studies or science and math. And with their being able to focus more on two individual subject areas, where the curriculum is so varied, we're now able to also spend more time looking at student data. So once a week, I meet with each of the specific subject area teams, ELA or math, in fourth and fifth grade, and we're starting to look at the data that we're collecting through iReady, MCAS reports, what we do with that. And having Mrs. Enos work in our building, to some extent, this fall, and run data meetings has been really helpful, too. So we're going to look to develop a process for that over the next year at the Howard as well. The report cards will certainly give us another data point for having those meetings. Goal number three, the RTI process, is something that we actually kind of started in the springtime with Mrs. Keen, Mr. Mike Glazek, and Mrs. Goulet and I, coming up with a district curriculum accommodation plan. And now that we have that, we have kind of a foundation for how to evaluate interventions for our kids. We are in the process of creating, we just shared today during our cabinet meeting, a district-wide unified form and process for tracking interventions for kids. We're showing it to our staff, and we're going to work on that over the course of this year to kind of refine that process. I think we've all made tremendous progress already this year so far. And then goal number four is specific to Howard, Google Classroom, continuing the seamless integration of technology into instruction using the SAMR model. I was blown away coming to the Howard last year at the sixth-grade team, how they use Google Classroom to not only organize their individual classrooms, to communicate with parents, to keep students organized. They've made some tweaks to how they do business with Google Classroom in the sixth grade, and I think it's time for us to start looking at using that in fourth and fifth grade as well. It's a really effective tool for keeping our kids on task, our staff organized, and parents completely in the loop on what's going on on an almost daily basis in our schools. So I asked the sixth-grade teachers to work with me this year on creating a model by which our staff are trained in fourth and fifth grade on how to use this. And the goal is that by the beginning of the upcoming school year, that it's a schoolwide expectation that our teachers use in Google Classroom. It's not a simple task. It's a pretty broad training that they need to go through to be able to use it. So those are our four goals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a voting issue.
I would like to make a motion to approve the school improvement plans for the Spring Street School, the Roselle McDonald School, and the Howard School as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next issue, our superintendent search, candidate interview with Mr. Bardwell. Mrs. Hume and Mrs. Sullivan.
Yes.
So we received a letter of intent, a resume and reference from a candidate, and we'd like to put the name forward of our own principal, Mark Bardwell.
Would you like to come up for the hot seat here?
It's all warmed up for you.
Don't worry, Mr. Bardwell, I won't bite.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I also appreciate they put me on the agenda after all the recognitions, because if I was before, it would have been a little more intimidating.
Were you concerned about an embarrassing moment?
No, 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 just, yeah.
Well, great to have you here.
Thank you very much.
You know, your work speaks for itself, and, you know, over twenty years here in the district, so we're kind of glad that you made an effort to maybe come forward and seek the position.
Great.
So we have five or six questions for you, and we'll start it off with Mrs. Hume.
Okay.
So you've been an assistant principal and principal in the district for close to twenty years. What qualities and skills will you bring to the superintendency that you have acquired in those positions?
Well, I think, you know, one of the big things is making the jump from the classroom to the administrative role. I think it was, you know, working with people that I've, you know, known for, you know, a few years. I think there has to be a lot of collaboration. In the different roles, there's been different expectations. Came fresh out of, you know, the classroom to be in the assistant principal role, which I felt was a great learning experience for me, because I worked under someone who became a mentor and provided me a lot of leadership opportunities, different than maybe the role of an assistant principal. So we kind of almost swapped roles. Then going into the Howard School, which was a new challenge for me, working with the grades four, five, and six, gave me a lot of curriculum experience and learning, you know, what to expect curriculum-wise. And then I think, you know, going back to the middle, senior, and high school for the past ten years has been, you know, just an amazing experience, working with middle school and high school students and staff. And I think all those combined have given me experiences to lead, but also to collaborate and learn from each other. I think, you know, one of the skills I think we need to have is collaborative leadership, where we're working with people and listening to all involved in terms of making decisions that's in the best interest of kids.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Excellent. So as you spoke of in your answer about collaborating and leading, what do you see as possible challenges as you transition from the role of principal to superintendent in relation to ensuring strong collaborative, yet supervisory relationships with other building administrators?
I think in every time you make a change in role, there's some challenges, and I've had that experience when I went from the classroom to become an assistant principal. I think I, you know, people that I started teaching with, and people had many more years experience than me, and I came into that leadership opportunity. So I think, you know, I think you always have to do, again, what's in the best interest of the district and of the kids. You have to have frank and strong, you know, discussions, and sometimes difficult discussions with people, and I think that's expected. And I think the goal after any kind of difficult conversation is that you come out of it with, you know, mutual feeling of respect, but also what's in the best interest of the district. I've had many times where I've gone into something and you kind of, you realize, oh, this is going to be a tough conversation, but after the conversation, I think that's when a lot of the magic happens, because then you say, all right, good, we've come to a common understanding of what we need to do to improve, and I think people value that. I think they value being frank and honest. And sometimes when, you know, whatever role you're in, if you have to make that ultimate decision, although it may be hard, you have to stand by it and be confident in that decision.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Holden.
I have the easy one.
All right.
A big part of the superintendency revolves around building and administering a budget. What would your priorities be for both building a budget and oftentimes making the difficult decision to cut a budget? Before you answer that, Dr. Oakley and I have been together for fifteen years, as you're aware. You've been with us all that time also. We've been through a lot of budgets. There've been good ones, and there've been bad ones. Unfortunately, Kathy's in the middle of a bad one. So thinking about where we are now and where we're going in the future is how I want you to answer.
Sure. I think you have to be realistic and know that there is a certain sum of money out there from the town, and you're sharing this money with different departments. So I think that's, you know, important to know and understand, but I also think you need to advocate for what you feel is most important. And I think that's, again, when you look at the pillars for success and you look at our district plan, I think focusing on those pillars are important, because that's, there has to be the focus, and it has to be the focus on what's best for kids. Inevitably, things will happen. Special ed, you know, costs may increase. You may have students move in, you need to fill a different position, for example, an ELL position. So you have to look and say, all right, if I have to make a cut, where do I make that cut that's least intrusive to the rest of the district? Again, that goes back to talking with people and listening. I think a lot of it has to be the listening piece first and then the talking. You need to allow people that you work with to have that opportunity to say, no, I really want this, I need this, and then they have to, you know, explain why it's important. Ultimately, you have to make a decision, but I think it's important to listen to all parties, because budget times will be tough. It's inevitable that there'll be good days and there'll be bad days, and the good days are easy to handle. It's the bad days that, you know, make you have to really think and consider, and again, go back to, you know, what's most important, and that's the kids.
Thank you.
I'm up again. Yes. In terms of decision-making, how would you describe your leadership style?
Collaborative. You know, we have, every two weeks, we have a coordinators' meeting, and we talk about things, and we have, you know, individual meetings as we need them with our coordinators to talk about what's going on. So I think the decision-making has to be looking at the whole and then focusing on the things that are most important. I think it's also important to listen to our kids, you know, what's important to them. I think sometimes, I mean, if we're all here for the kids, we have to also listen and have an open door so people can come in and talk. I want to, we listen to the school committee. We listen to the community at large of what's important. We look at things that are coming in the future. I mean, we've talked at the, you know, with social-emotional needs, I think so you have to, you know, look at those as well to focus on, you know, what's important. So when you're making decisions, you take in everything into the, you know, the equation to factor out what's most important.
Mrs. Smith.
Mr. Bardwell, what do you envision the West Bridgewater Public Schools will look like in three to five years under your leadership?
I think, you know, author Daniel Pink said we need to educate our students for their future and not our past, so I think we always have to be looking ahead as to what is most important. Where do we want to see them, you know, in terms of college and career readiness? We want to see them, you know, focused on the most important part of becoming a good citizen, but also becoming a well-rounded student. So I see us continuing to look at technology integration. We want to make them thinkers. We want them to be, you know, have the 21st century skills. We want them to be, to use ingenuity, and we want them to have empathy. So I think we want to factor in all those things. I think we want to continue to be a school that's looked upon through school choice, where people want to come here. We're very proud of that. And when we see all those applications and we hear about kids and saying, and families saying, how do we get our child into the school system? And that's a lot of, you know, pride from all of us in the community. I think we want to see us continue to excel. In three to five years, I think we also need to look at what we're at for buildings. One of the important things, we've got this beautiful new facility that took a long time to get, but we see how productive it has been for the education of our students. Down the road, we'll probably need to look at some of our older buildings, Spring Street and Roselle. What do we need to do to address any potential needs there? Again, our teachers do an outstanding job, our kids do a great job, the community supports these buildings, our maintenance does a great job maintaining them, but it's not until you see a new facility, you know, it has to offer of all the great things that can happen in a state-of-the-art facility. So I think looking ahead, those are important things to look at, and I think we have to look at our social-emotional, you know, needs of our kids. I think that's paramount in terms of... I think that's paramount in terms of educating the whole child. It's great to have a strong curriculum, strong instruction, strong assessments, but we have to look at the whole child to make sure that they're doing well, to be educated.
Why do you think you should be the next superintendent of the West Bridgewater Public Schools?
Actually, he had the easy question.
That is it.
Damn.
I love West Bridgewater. This is a position in terms of being here, it was, in many ways, it was a hard decision because I love what I do. I love our kids, I love our staff. I always say the three things we have going for us are, we have great kids who are talented and amazing, we've got a dedicated and caring staff, and we've got a supportive community behind us. If I can have the opportunity to take those things, you know, pre-K to 12, would be an amazing opportunity. I look at all the great things that go on in each of the buildings. I've been, you know, super proud of the middle, senior, high school and all we've accomplished, and same as when I was at the Howard School. Why I should, I mean, I think I could show the leadership skills to continue the great things Dr. Oakley has done in the future. That would be my goal. I mean, I'm passionate about the town, the community, our kids, and our staff, and I think we're really lucky to be here. I've found that my 23 years have been an amazing experience, and if I could take that next step, it would be awesome.
Thank you. Do you have any questions of us?
I mean, I think part of it, the collaboration, has to be, you know, superintendent administration working with the school committee. What is your vision for success in the future, and what are you looking for down the road in a new superintendent?
For me personally, and I'm not going to speak for everybody, but just, Dr. Oakley's tremendous leadership over the past 13 years has been exemplary, and we're looking to kind of just move that whole tradition, keep going forward. The kids come out of these schools, just so that I could speak myself, I have a daughter in college who's doing really well, I have one who's graduating this year, and I'm proud of the fact that they go to these schools and the public education and they graduate, and I would just like to see this, you know, keep moving forward at the same pace, you know, and all the kids in this town have these great opportunities in front of them as soon as they get out of college or high school or anything. So anybody? No? Anything else?
No. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you.
All right.
Very much.
Thank you.
Get your seat back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Meg, did you have a question? Sorry that we did not.
I know.
No questions, of course.
At this time, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Mark Bodwell as our next superintendent.
We have a motion to appoint Mr. Bodwell. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We will obviously appoint pending contractual negotiations, which we will be in touch.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
No? Thank you. Just on my part, I think it's well-deserved, well-deserved, well-earned. You know, your work speaks for itself, and, you know, I'm glad that this decision is being made, and I think we're all in agreement that this is the right decision, too.
I had actually Googled questions to ask during a superintendent interview when this came up, and one of the questions I found was, what do you know to ask the candidate is, what do you know about our community and school district? And I thought to myself, gosh, aren't we fortunate that to have a candidate who already knows our district and who has already vested 23 years here, someone who's already a Wildcat. So a candidate who has shown consistent support of our students, families, community, and staff, along with a willingness to work tirelessly for our growth and well-being of our district. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I'm all in. And like I said, you know, I work the way I want the school system to work for my own kids, and that's, that's like, we all live, like, yeah, and I think so.
And then for me, I'm super excited about the fact that you'll be able to work with Dr. Oakley, and this is such a precious time right now, because it's going to go so quickly, and we'll be saying goodbye to Dr. Oakley and hello, Mr. Bodwell. But with that transition time, I think that that's just super important right now for you as well as for Dr. Oakley, and...
No, I was going to say, it's a great opportunity that you'll be able to work together.
Right, right. And that I just, I've seen you myself, you know, in different roles, so I see the transition into superintendent going very smoothly, and it's really just a natural progression for you, so welcome, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
And you know, it really wasn't an easy decision to decide when I announced my retirement, because I've done this now for close to 15 years, so, but, and I kind of feel like giving my child away to someone, but honestly, there's nobody better, and how lucky am I to be able to give it away to someone who I've known and trusted for the last, you know, 23 years? So it makes me feel better about it. And a little known fact is that when I was doing my doctoral work, one of the things I had to do was to create a district-wide teacher induction program, and Mr. Bodwell was in my first mentor program that I had to do that year as a teacher, so the fact that I get to mentor him again as superintendent is kind of full, we've gone full circle together, so that's kind of neat. So I think you guys made the right decision.
I believe we have.
Yep.
And I look forward to the next several months with you. And I will keep myself available after the fact.
Especially if he's doing a building project, he's going to be back.
Yeah, you'll be calling me when you build another Howard School. Or Roselle, or Spring Street, who knows?
All right, moving on, we have approval of policies, policies A through C, and we have a voting issue. Did anybody have any discussion on the new policies? Any comments, questions, or do we have a motion to accept?
She's talking from a high to a low.
You read those policies.
Now you're going to talk about policies?
Well, I'm just so grateful for all the work that you guys have done on these policies, and just reviewing them after they've been completed has been a task, so I can't imagine what you guys have been, and I know we're only on C, so I'm very impressed and thankful for all that you guys have done with them.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion that we accept policies A through C into our policies.
I think we approved them.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye. As we accept, I just have one question. As we accept these, are we making them public right away, or are we...
Yes. Yeah, I think I'll up right away.
Yep, we're going to get them up on the website now that they've been approved.
Just on our website?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. All right, now I'm ready to vote.
Okay.
All right, and now we have policies.
Policies now, so as the same procedure as A through C, Donna and I would like to present policies D through F for your review.
Okay.
And then we'll talk about them in January. If you have any questions, feel free to contact Donna or I.
Are we going all the way to Z?
Yes.
Yeah, how many more months do they have?
We look like heroes when we're done.
All the policies will be done on June 30th, just in time for Mr. Bodwell to take over.
Yes. We'll put them all together for you.
Thank you for your hard work. I mean, this is, I know, a little tedious and everything, but a lot of time, so you got to putting it out on your own. Warrant subcommittee report, Mrs. Sullivan.
Oh, another dry topic. Okay, so the following warrants were issued and paid for fiscal year 2020. Under the bill warrants dated November 14th, 2019, in the amount of $87,394.82. A bill warrant dated November 21st, 2019, in the amount of $50,473.14. And then the last bill warrant dated December 12th, 2019, in the amount of $198,096.15. And then there were two payroll warrants, one dated November 29th, 2019, in the amount of $501,605.28. And then the second one was dated December 13th, 2019, in the amount of $518,858.15. As always, all warrants are public record, and once they are signed, they are available in the selectmen's office for review.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Public forum, members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be discussed during this public forum. Seeing no takers. We'll move on to our district-wide announcements. District-wide school council meetings, the Roselle McDonald School, December 16th at 3:30. PTO Tuesday, December 17th at 7:00 p.m. at the Roselle McDonald School. Athletic boosters, December 11th, 7:00 p.m., and January 8th at 7:00 p.m. Student service coffee hour, Wednesday, January 22nd, 8:30 a.m. at the Middle Senior High School in the Learning Commons. Inclusion Matters, January 13th at 7:00 p.m. at the Bridge Center, the West Bridgewater, Bridge Center in Bridgewater on Successful Transition Planning Seminar. At the Middle Senior High School, December 12th, I'm sorry, the winter concerts at 6:30. January 10th is Midnight Madness. I'd also like to throw in here, since we had the cross-country team and the success of the football team, that our winter sports are getting underway this week, you know, good luck to all the teams and coaches.
Last week. We're seeing you Friday night.
So good luck to all the teams and all the coaches for the winter season. At the Howard School, December 11th is the winter concert at 5:30 at the Middle Senior High School. December 13th, grade six field trip to Patriot Place. December 13th, progress reports are issued. The Roselle McDonald School, December 10th, grade two Museum of Science Habitat's presentation, PTO sponsored. December 13th, Little Shopper's Shop, 6 to 8 p.m. December 14th, the Santa's Breakfast, 9 a.m. to 11 a.m., PTO sponsored. At the Spring Street School, December 19th, the Polar Express at 1 p.m. at the Middle Senior High School. Our next regular scheduled school committee meeting will be Monday, January 13th at 6:30 p.m. here in the Middle Senior High School Learning Commons. We're going to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to negotiate non-union personnel, and not to reconvene in open session, and we do a roll call vote.
Aye.
Mrs. Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Aye.
Mrs. Hume. And myself, aye.
Who came out of order down there?
That was me.
Thank you.
Thank you.